We'll go ahead and do that. Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order if you'll please stand for invocation and pledge.
Join me as I pray. Our dear gracious holy father, we thank you for this day, we thank for the beautiful weather that you brought us today as we entered into the fall season, and we thank for this opportunity to come again and do the business of the city of Cartersville. Thank you for this opportunity to live in this great country and in this great state. Don't be forced now as we do this work, and we'll give the praise and glory for all that's done and said, and in your name we pray.
Amen.
Please join in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, united in the principle of liberty, justice, and all other. Ms. Drake, the roll please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1, here. Jace Depp, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Tachrin, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Julia, for that. Good evening, everybody. Jace is caught in a really bad traffic jam, so Gary is on business and decided to join us via phone, so we appreciate their commitment to doing that. And we'll get about the business of the city tonight. Our first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from October the 6th. The council, you've had an opportunity to review these. Now would be the time to make any changes. If there are none to be had, a motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. All in favor, Nikita, saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter, you have, I'm guessing it's going to be you, a series of second readings of ordinances?
Yes, Mayor. The first one on their second reading is the employee annual accrual, annual leave amendment. What this does, if approved, will expedite the employee, right now at three weeks vacation, accrual starts after year number eight. I'm asking for that to be changed to starting at year number six. Four weeks accrual start year number 11 of the employee's tenure, and year number, five weeks vacation accrual will start in year 16. This will be an extra benefit for our employees and also another improvement tool for us to hire additional personnel.
Okay, is there any questions or discussion on this item? And if there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, Nikita, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, sir. As a parental leave, this is another item that we'd like to have for recruitment and retention of employees. Essentially, this would offer maternity leave for a female employee for birth of child or adoption for four weeks paid leave, and for a male employee for birth of child or adoption for two weeks of paid leave.
Again, any questions of staff or any discussion amongst council be had? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. All in favor, Nikita, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Dan.
Yes, Mayor, this is an educational assistance program. This would be another, again, recruitment and retention tool for us, basically offering employees opportunity to grow in their field within the city. If they want to move within another department of the city, getting either associates, a bachelor's, or master's degree, gives them an opportunity to have some of those costs paid for by the city. That would be budget annually, but I do recommend approval of this ordinance.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Porter or anybody on staff on this item?
This is just one, like, item. This is just one set of items that's taken out of there.
It'd be budget annually, so if somebody in Derek's Department of Electric, it would come out of electric fund, basically where that employee is based out of, what they're looking for. You know, if Sidney, if engineer, somebody wanted to grow within his department, it'd go to engineering, and it would come out of water fund, budget annually.
But it would be capped, so for instance, once that ceiling is reached, then somebody has to wait, or we would go back before council to see if we want to do this.
Status quo. It'd be budget annually, it'd be amount annually in the budget, you say this is how much we have available.
Any other questions or discussion? If there's none, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to deny this.
Okay, a motion to deny, does anybody have a second? And motion dies from lack of a second, so are there any other motions?
Most of them.
Second.
All in favor, Nikita, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And an opposed like sign. Motion carries five to one. Next item, please. Next item. Thank you, Randy. And I apologize if I'm jumping, I was not at the work session, I had a chamber event that I just finished moments ago, so.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. This is a second reading of a proposed text amendment to the alcohol ordinance, section dealing with specialty shops. The applicant is requesting to allow distilled spirits to be served in addition to the beer and wine that's already allowed. If you recall, they came in several months ago with a different request that included this, and it didn't, a portion of it got through dealing with craft beer. That was resolved, but the percentage of sales portion was dropped by the applicant, and he did resubmit to the alcohol control board to allow the distilled spirits portion. With that, didn't show up at the alcohol control board, meaning the alcohol control board did recommend denial of this application. We've had a little bit of discussion in the work session prior to that on this, but with that, right now, there have been no changes since the first reading.
Okay. Questions for Randy at this time? And thank you. I'll note, I sent an email to council today requesting, I can't put, I don't know that I can, in the form of a, I can't do motions, so, sent an email asking that the condition would be put on for specialty shops. If council were to consider this, that it would be requiring that a business would have to, hey, have their beer and wine license, and then that, to add the liquor component of it, that it would need to be 75%, which is currently at 65% for beer and wine. So, again, in my mind, it kind of provides a level of safeguard regarding maybe any unintended consequences, that, you know, a company that's selling mostly retail, have a little bit higher threshold for the liquor, that would perhaps assuage some concerns that some people may have. Now that being said, I don't, we learned last week, I have very little knowledge of which way y'all are going to go on things at times, and I have no idea if this is something council wants to consider or doesn't want to consider. So, I'll leave it at that, and if council needs any discussion or has any questions for the applicant, the applicant is here. And I guess I'll ask if the applicant would like to make any comment, anything new from the last time you presented to us, if you'll step forward and give your name and your address for us, please.
Mayor and council, Jason Frederick, 39, South Public Square, Cartersville, 30120. Hey, guys and ladies. The statement I wanted to make was, he had mentioned us not showing up for the alcohol board. Well, there's two reasons. One was a mistake on the time. The other reason is, we were told point blank by the head of the alcohol board, we don't believe you should have an alcohol license period, and we don't like your ordinance. So, showing up to the alcohol board after that, what good's it going to do me? I mean, he publicly made his mind up. Now, our first trip to the alcohol board, they were for it. We had three yeses and two nos, with the head of the board voting no because there was two absences. So, that's why I didn't move forward. It goes back to the alcohol board. It flipped. We had four nos and one yes. Well, after the head of the board made it very clear he was not for that ordinance existing, much less serving alcohol, I don't think it hurt or helped us not being there that morning, honestly. So, that's to clarify the statement about us missing that meeting. Honest mistake, thought it was at 7:00 PM, not 10:00 AM, but after the way we were handled the first meeting, I really don't feel like it would have made a difference either way. So, that's what I wanted to say about that. Also, I did have a chance to talk to some of you guys individually, and I appreciate the time you gave us to talk, to get to know us, our reasoning, the head, the hearts behind it, the request, and I am open to any questions that you may have.
Thoughts about the 75% stipulation?
My name's Buddy Frederick, 39, South Public Square, Cartersville, Georgia, 30120. To answer your question, Mr. Mayor, we would consider that, certainly. I don't know at what point. Right now, it wouldn't hurt us at all. I think it would be fine to consider doing that. Down the road, we may have to come back and see you, but right now, it wouldn't be an issue. So, we're, as of right now for our third quarter, we're at 12.4%.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a question, Mr. Frederick?
Wouldn't that have to go back before, if you, since their application does not address percentage, if you were to add a percentage, shouldn't that go back to the alcohol control board, because you're actually adding something that is not in the application?
Well, my thought would be, we add conditions, we could add conditions here on property, and it doesn't have to go back before the planning commission.
Yeah, now, alcohol, they're great, they do not let it in the application, so.
Well, I think it's a waste of time to send it back, from what he said, but, you know, it's a concern I've got, I don't really care what you do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for us?
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, send your hands.
Matt, Matt, can I ask you a question?
Go right ahead, Jace.
So, the distilled spirit is still a license that you would have to buy above and beyond what you already have, right? And so, if you balked at, what you're trying to say is, you'd have different percentages. Right now, they have 65% for craft beer, and then the beer and wine. For distilled spirits, what you're saying is, on any of these specialty shops, it would be 75%.
That's what I would prefer, yes.
I like that, I think that's good.
I do, too. Would you like to put that in the form of a motion, counselor?
Yes. That is a motion to approve with stipulation for the distilled spirits to be at 75%. Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, but we can still have discussion. Go ahead, counselor.
So, the percentage is 75% of non-alcohol sales and 25% of alcohol sales?
That is correct. Any other discussion? All right, we do have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And an opposed like sign?
No.
Motion carries four to two. All right, we have, next item, T-2204.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. This is a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance. The applicant is looking to amend the office commercial zoning district to allow private parks as a special use permit or with a special use permit. Private parks are currently allowed in other zoning districts, R-20, single-family residential, and so forth by right. The applicant is proposing, in a subsequent application after this text amendment is heard, for a special use on a piece of property located off of West Avenue, kind of back behind Ingalls on a 34-acre tract.
Chow, Chow, Chow.
Again, that is a separate application, but it is completely, it is directly related to this proposed text amendment. Their applicant is looking to provide a private park or fields for little league or for youth baseball. With that, it'll be a pay-to-play type facility. The planning commission did hear the application, and they did recommend approval. And again, item number nine on your agenda is the actual special use, and come second reading, if you choose to move forward with the text amendment, then you would hear the special use permit application also.
Okay. And when I looked, I couldn't tell, are they proposing there to be lights on that at this point? I guess we can wait till the public hearing.
Yeah, or we could wait for the special use application as part of the text amendment. No, but.
That's right, that wouldn't be part of this. I apologize, thank you.
But I did ask that question after the planning commission meeting, and at that time, they were not, but they weren't restricted if in the future they chose to do lighting.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, a little premature with that question. All right, any questions for Randy at this point about T-24-04?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I do clarify, on the applicant says ball fields, but you keep mentioning little league fields.
Youth baseball fields, I probably shouldn't have used the word little league.
Yeah, little league, that's a distinction, you're going to have a problem.
Yeah, I apologize. I did say little league, I meant youth, youth ball fields.
Okay. Okay?
I think the applicant's here, I'm not sure.
All right.
The applicant is here.
At this time, I'll open up, if there's nothing else for Mr. Manino, welcome councilman. I'll open up a public hearing for T-22-04, and ask anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time. And again, your name and your address, please.
Hi, Lauren Knoll, 114 Old Mill Road, I'm with Southland Engineering. So, I just want to appreciate and thank you for hearing our case tonight. Our client is requesting a text amendment to be made to the OC Office Commercial Zoning District to include the use of private parks. Our proposed development will be for the use of a private ball field specifically for youth, and specifically for practice fields. This area is within a floodplain, and so it just makes sense for the landowner to make this use, for this proposed use ball field. And not to mention, it is beneficial to the commercial district to use this text amendment to include private parks, because more and more are we seeing today, the use of parks and athletics associated with commercial areas, because more people want to be involved and have, you know, close proximity to these types of amenities around in their community. So, at the moment, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Once again, discussing the text amendment, T-22-04. Again, anybody who wishes to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T-22-04. Council will have a second reading and take this up for consideration at our first meeting in November. That is November the 3rd, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Z-22-03.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. This is actually a second reading. We've had thorough discussion on this during the previous meeting. It's a proposed planned development or PD zoning district with conditions proposed to be PD with different conditions. It's located in the southeast quadrant of their section of Old Alabama, Carter Grove Boulevard, approximately 48-acre tract, currently approved for approximately 220 townhomes in a mixed-use type development. The applicant's proposing approximately 165 duplex and triplex units. Since the first reading, as part of the application, the applicant has provided a list of things that will be included as conditions on that development, as part of the application or letter that they submitted with the initial package that was submitted. If you recall, they had proposed doing clubhouse, swimming pool, pickleball courts, targeting 55 and older age group. With that, since the first reading, they did submit an additional condition they would like to include as part of the application, dealing directly with age-targeted and age-restricted. And the condition they had submitted reads as follows, the entire project will be age-targeted to occupants 55 and above, and at least 50% of the units will have an occupant 55 or older pursuant to the Federal Fair Housing Rules. So, they did bring that and change, that is the one change since the first reading. And with that, the applicant is here if we have any additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino at this point? All right, I'll open up a public hearing for Z-22-03, and again, ask anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, to do so at this time. Good evening, Mr. Bowen.
Good evening. Brandon Bowen, 15 South Public Square. Happy to be with you all this evening. So, the only thing I'm, the only things I'm going to address right now are the couple issues that have come up recently. One is the condition, I drafted the proposed condition that it be age-targeted, and that each unit have at least one resident that is 55 or older, 50% of those units, rather. The reason I chose that language is because for doing with the Fair Housing Act, it allows you to, well, if you're going to tell someone they can't live here because they're not 55, then we have to have 80% in there. Now, my clients want to do this type of business. They are willing to do a restriction that will make you comfortable, but the concern I have is that if we follow that strict 80% rule, and there's any deviation, they're going to get sued under the Fair Housing Act, and because it's a condition of zoning, the city's going to be part of that, too. And so, I backed that down to 50% to give us some leeway and avoid enforcement nightmares. If you feel that it needs to be higher to make you comfortable, then, you know, we can live with that. But that said, no other development in Carter Grove is subject to that restriction, just this one. As far as height, they do wish to build single-family, or excuse me, single-story buildings. Now, single-story buildings don't necessarily result in buildings that are 10 feet tall. You know, they would be, you know, whatever, 20 feet tall or something like that. We would like to be able to put the clubhouse bigger than that. So, what we would propose is that the, I think the existing restrict, or existing condition that allows for, is it, am I right, 45 feet?
45.
Yeah, we're happy for that to go away and just be treated like any other single-family in the city, which I believe is 35 feet.
Okay.
And those are the two things that I wanted to speak about tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And my client's here as well, if you have any questions for them.
Everybody have questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Manino, if you'll step forward, I got a question for you relative to that. The, relative to the clubhouse, I'm guessing administratively, if they design a clubhouse that's taller than 35 feet, y'all can decide whatever's reasonable, or does that need to be stipulated in the PUD?
You probably want it stipulated in the PUD.
Okay. But that's, I mean, something as they work with you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
When they develop that plan, that would happen.
It would come through the plan review process, and we would go through the list and be a standard review.
And if it's a single-story clubhouse, I know I'm kind of bouncing people back and forth, but, I mean, would that be, we talking 50 feet for one of the structures, or we talking 60? Do you have any, I mean, do you have any idea what a normal expectation that would be? I can ask.
35 feet's the max height in a typical residential development, and that includes two-story homes.
So, that would include the clubhouse?
So, that would include the clubhouse, and I think it would, it would work.
Got you. All right. Thank you. I'm guessing that's agreeable, that's, okay, thank you. Again, we're in a public hearing for Z-22-03, and asking anybody who wishes to step forward to speak for or against, to do so at this time. And seeing none, I will turn it over to council for consideration, after closing that public hearing.
I'd like to approve with the 50% at 55 or older, and reduce it to 35 feet.
Second.
Just so I'm clear, does that, that doesn't age-restrict it? That's the condition that they agreed to, is that correct? Okay.
50% is age-restricted, 55.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so we got a motion and a second, all in favor, Nikita, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, we'll move on to SU-22-03, the first reading.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. This is a proposed solid waste transfer facility with a special use application located at 315 Industrial Park Road. If you recall, back in 2019, the applicant, along with another applicant, came in with a proposed transfer station and medical waste disposal facility. They're looking to separate that out now on the adjacent property. With that, they've made a new application, went back through planning commission, twice, actually, back to the planning commission. The first time, they actually didn't, the planning commission didn't make a recommendation, and we had them hear it again, and after that, they did make a recommendation for approval four to one with a list of six conditions that are included in your package. There was a lot of discussion with the planning commission about some concerns that came out from some opposition dealing with notice violations from the EPD. The applicant did address those with the planning commission. Staff has contacted the EPD about that. With that, again, the planning commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Randy at this time?
Sir, are these, I should have asked this earlier, but the planning commission recommended approval of the following conditions, and are all those conditions the applicant has brought those or approved?
Yes, after the, after addressing or hearing some of the concerns, they did bring those conditions forward, and they are, they are fully aware of them, and they actually brought them forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And again, the previous application, this from 2019, did not have those conditions. The biggest concern back then was the medical waste facility, and we never addressed the transfer facility.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up a public hearing for SU-22-03, and ask anybody who wishes to step forward, for or against, to step forward at this time.
Good evening again. Brandon Bowen, 15 South Public Square. I'm here tonight on behalf of Cash Environmental Services. We've got Kevin Cash here, as well as Howard Smith, who is the owner of the property. So, I was here for you in 2019, shortly before COVID. We, I think you unanimously approved a pharmaceutical waste facility and transfer station. The, as far as I know, the pharmaceutical waste is still going forward. Cash Environmental was going to operate the transfer station component, and going through the site development process, they've just decided it's too tight to do it all on one spot. Mr. Smith's property was available, and so the idea is, well, we'll expand on to that. But of course, to do that, you know, the special use permit you granted in 2019 doesn't cover Mr. Smith's property, so we have to come back. But it's the same use that we brought to you there. Pharmaceutical waste is not a component of this on Mr. Smith's property. That will stay on the first site, which is next door. So, as you know, this is in the industrial park. All the property out here is zoned, heavy industrial, at least all the city property is, and it's all used as a heavy industrial area. This is, it's a heavy industrial park, it is what it is. So, I'll ask Mr. Cash to give you a little bit, a little bit of knowledge about how they operate their business. But we do want to address the concerns that had been raised, that were raised in writing. One, there was concerns about dust. It's the same operation that we were talking about in 2019. They will take measures to control the dust, and that's, that's not going to be an issue. As far as odors, the concerns like that, that can be with transfer stations, you know, the EPD has regulations to control that, and Mr. Cash will talk to you about how they will operate to control that issue. No hazardous waste stops at this facility. As you know, the way a transfer station works is a garbage truck brings waste in, or a contractor brings it in, and it gets loaded into, or sorted and loaded into a tractor trailer to take to a landfill. So, the Cashes have a CND landfill in Pickens County. So, the expectation is that most of this waste will be CND to serve their existing landfill. That's the business model that makes sense for them. However, sometimes customers come, and they have CND and MSW waste, and so they want to have that to incentivize their customers to come to them, instead of going to some other land, or some other transfer station that has both. That's the reason for having both. No hazardous waste or anything of that nature. We do anticipate that there would be some synergy with the existing facility as far as maybe shared scales, shared routing, things like that, you know. So, I want to address some of the issues that were raised, with the expectation that they will be raised later in this hearing. One, there was a concern that, you know, what impact would this have on waste in the county, and specifically the county's landfill. I spoke with Rip Connor with the county. He actually submitted a letter that's in the file. He explained that this is actually likely to extend the life of the county landfill because it's going to lead to waste going out of the county, not into the county. So, that's not a concern. We had some folks who spoke who frankly wished to compete with us, and maybe bring an application in the county in the near future. I don't know what to say about that. The big issue was notice of. The big issue was notice of violations. There, if you have in the file a number of notices of violations that were submitted to Cash from the EPD, it is my understanding that that is every single notice of violation that they have received in their decades of operation. And that they have all, at least all that involve Cash, have all been resolved, and I think Mr. Hardigre spoke with the EPD agent who confirmed that they have all been resolved successfully. Some of them sound terrible. You know, for instance, one is illegal operation of a landfill, or operating an unlicensed landfill. That sounds terrible, right? But what it was is Cash was operating a facility, and they had an internal transfer of the, between entities, from the one that had the permit to another. Not same people, but it's a different corporate entity. They should have filed a notice promptly, I think within thirty days with the EPD, but more than thirty days passed, they didn't file it, there was, there was inspection, it was discovered, and so they got a notice of violation that they were operating an illegal landfill. It's the same one that was permitted, just a different entity. So that's all been resolved, and it's not like there is a landfill going on out there that, you know, was being hidden away from everybody. There also, you may hear this, they are currently in Chapter eleven bankruptcy. Now, we've talked to the, to the Planning Commission a great deal about this, there's a bunch of different types of bankruptcy. You know, there is the, I don't have any money left and I need help. There is also a, we need help, our business needs help restructuring, what I call the Delta bankruptcy. Everybody remembers when Delta went bankrupt a couple decades ago, planes kept flying. That is exactly what the situation is here. I understand the bankruptcy attorney had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Archer and kind of explain all that, so hopefully if there's anything wrong in what I said, he can, you know, he can correct that. So that said, I want to turn the floor over to Mr. Cash and let him tell you exactly what he wants to operate, and then also want to give Howard Smith the opportunity to speak a little bit, as he is the property owner and will be the landlord throughout this process. If there is any time left, I'd like to use it in rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you come forward, Mr. Cash, Mr. Mino, I'm going to call on you again and ask, relative to the criteria that council's to consider when it comes to a special use, is financial, are there any, one of those guidelines relative to financial consideration?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Council. Kevin Cash, five-five-eight Faith Street, Marietta. So as, as Brandon's already explained, we, we have four notices of violation that were received in the December, January, February timeframe. And as he also mentioned, we were in the middle of a transfer of ownership of both our landfill, which has been around since the early two thousands, and Talking Rock, Georgia, which is in Pickens County up five fifteen, and the transfer stations that serve that. One of the notices of violation had to do with financial assurance. The landfill at that time was assured with the state EDP through a mechanism, a trust mechanism, and it was the intent to change that mechanism to a bond mechanism after the close of the landfill. The close got delayed a little bit, and we got this notice of violation because we had, we had gone past the deadline. We requested an extension of that deadline from the state, we received that extension, and then we caught up the, or made, made right with the additional financial assurance. Just to clarify, there was financial assurance in place, but every year, the EDP does a review to look at what the current volume is of the landfill to determine how much additional financial assurance might be required, either because of inflation or because there's a larger volume of the landfill that needs closure. So that was one of the NOVs. It was, it was connected with the timeframe of the close. Two of the transfer stations fell into similar kinds of situations where, you know, as Brandon mentioned, we did not get permit by rule applications in, in time. And as I mentioned to the Planning and Zoning Committee, I, it's not my intent to make light of the need to timely submit documents to the EDP, that's, it's not my intent. It is, it is my desire, though, to explain what it was. It was a bureaucratic oversight on our part that resulted in some of that. The other things, and again, I mentioned this to Planning and Zoning as well, we did receive an NOV at Woodstock location for waste that was outside of the cover of the transfer station. There's no, there's no great excuse for that one on our part. It was, it was a failure, it was operational failure on our part, it needed to be cleaned up, it had not been a longstanding, longstanding problem, but the day the inspector came, it wasn't, it didn't look the way that it should, we acknowledged that, we cleaned it up, we took care of that.
How many of those have you had in your time in business?
Those four are it. Yeah, those four are it. And to give you some sense of, of time in business, my cousin is the owner of Cash Environmental Resources, and my father and his father built the landfill and the first transfer station in Smyrna in nineteen eighty. So we've, we've been around for, for quite a while, and this, this is not the way that we, the way that we do business. So those are the, those are the primary ones. There's, there's one other that is, again, we take all of these things seriously, but there's one other one, a transfer station that we purchased at the same time that we changed over the ownership of the landfill. This one's in Blairsville. There had been some storm damage to a roof. The roof ended up being removed just at the time that we were closing on the landfill. The inspector came and found a, an unroofed transfer station. We were of the understanding that that was going to be handled through an insurance claim with the seller. That turned out not to be the case, so we, at our expense, replaced the roof. And I have photographs of, and as Mr. Hardigre, I think, has, you know, has, you know, heard, those are, those, all those things have been addressed. I do want to address the bankruptcy, because I understand that word, it certainly is a, it certainly is a, an ominous word, and I can tell you from our experience, it's not a fun experience to be a part of. But as Brandon mentioned, it is a restructure. Our funding source out of Detroit puts some, put us into a technical default, which is not a financial situation, and made some demands on us, financial demands, that were just untenable for us at the time, forced us to take this measure as an opportunity to restructure, and so we're, we are in the process of that. Nothing that was done was related to solvency or anything like that. So we are, we're taking advantage of that opportunity to restructure. I know there's some other concerns, I know there are concerns any time that anybody touches or moves waste of any kind, and so I'm happy to address any of the things that have already been mentioned or any other concerns that you have.
We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, before you step forward, I have a question for Mr. Hardigre. Mr. Bowen had mentioned earlier that you had spoken with the EPD. I just want to verify that you did have that conversation, what you were told?
Yes, I did. I spoke with two representatives with EPD. They're the two representatives that issued the letters of violation, it was Jason Rogers and Serena Bruska. Jason was involved with the, with Union County, Cherokee County, and Fannin County landfills. Serena was involved with the Pickens County landfill. Union, they both said that the Union County, Fannin County, and the Pickens County violations had been corrected, and those files have been closed out. The one open file they still have was for Cherokee County, and what they pointed to was some type of resolution that was needed between Cash Environmental and Cherokee County themselves, between some type of misunderstanding in their contract obligation. But they expect that as soon as that local disagreement was worked out between the two, then EPD would be able to close out their file. Just a matter of a local dispute there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. My name's Howard Smith, twenty-five Stonewall Street. I'd like to address some of the concerns that came up in the Planning Commission meeting. David, if you would turn that power point on. Thank you. Next screen, please. So these are the type buildings you might find in a, in a new transfer station. Next slide, please. Go back one. See, there you go. So there was some opposition from some neighboring property owners to the south of us, implying that this transfer station's going to decrease the value of their property. This is one of those properties located on Gaithen Drive, owned by Rice Investments, and you'll see that it's currently being operated as a wood recycling center. Those are piles of mulch on the left, that's scrap wood in the middle, and piles of logs on the right. Not sure how we're going to depreciate that. Next screen. Between our property and the Rice property is a seven-hundred-foot floodplain buffer that separates the usable properties on both properties. It's over two football fields. Next screen, please. Beyond that, it's over twenty-two hundred feet from the edge of our usable property to where the road ends on the Rice property. So that's over a half mile. And it's like Brandon said, we recently learned that this Rice property is now being submitted to the county for a transfer station, so I thought that was interesting. Next screen, please. This is Jimmy Crane's property. Jimmy opposed us, saying we were going to depreciate his property on People's Valley Road. You'll see that there are unfinished buildings, there are abandoned vehicles, some have not moved in years. Not really sure how we're going to depreciate that property, but he had a concern. Next screen, please. So you have a letter in your packet from Ms. Goolsby, who is objecting to this center, and in her letter, she states that before she purchased her property, she evaluated the zoning and the uses in the surrounding area. Her property, our property, and all the properties I'm going to show you are zoned heavy industrial, which allows for a transfer station with a permit. Additionally, I want, I want to kind of give you a flavor of the neighborhood out there, just so you'll know what type of uses are typical in this area. This first screen is USA Ready Mix, it's a concrete plant, they have a gravel apron and, and parking area, big trucks come in and out every day, there's dust, but nobody really complains. Next screen, please. This is Snitzer Recycling. This is a salvage scrapyard located on Industrial Park Road. Piles of metal sit out there uncovered daily. What's interesting about this is I have a building out there also, similar to Ms. Goolsby's. I have tenants in it. My building is right next to this scrapyard, I've had tenants in there for seventeen years. They drive out of my building every day and look at this scrapyard, no complaints. Next slide, please. This is Absolute Environmental. Their line of business is septic tank, sewer line, and wastewater treatment, pumping, and disposal. Now, there's nothing wrong with any of these businesses. They serve a need in our community, they do business just like everybody else, but these are the type of businesses that are out there. And so really, what we're proposing, we feel is not much different than what's already in the area. Next slide, please. This is AgTran. They bring in aggregate material, rock, sand, on trains, goes out on big trucks, it's dusty, it's on the ground. But again, that's, that's how the neighborhood is out there. Next screen, please. All right, so this slide shows the property line of Ms. Goolsby's property and the, and the subject property we have, where we want to put the, where the Cashes want to put the transfer station. The top photos show if you were behind her building, looking out onto the property, and you'll see that there's quite a bit of natural vegetation there, trees, bushes, there's really a, a visual buffer already in place. If you look at the bottom pictures, you'll see that that extends nearly twenty feet off the fence until you get to the property line. We want to enhance that a little bit, so I'll talk about that later, but just want to give you an idea of, of what it looks like on the property line between the two properties. Next slide, please. You've got, you've got some pictures in your packet of, of the landfill, or excuse me, the transfer station violations. There is no way that the City of Cartesville would permit or allow a transfer station like you guys have seen in those photos. Anything the Cashes build is going to be subject to current development and, development regulations and rules. So they can't just go out and scrape dirt and start pouring trash. Even if you grant the permit tonight, City of Cartesville will have planning process and approval rights before they can go out there and start moving dirt. So what this slide shows is a current transfer station located at one-twenty-five Riverside Drive. It's in the top-left corner. These other photos represent businesses that are in close proximity to the transfer station. In fact, they all have a driveway that shares the same cul-de-sac. So businesses can and do operate around transfer stations. Next slide, please. There's also a claim that there's going to be unmanaged wastewater and stormwater running from this transfer station onto neighboring properties. The City of Cartesville does not allow you to dump stormwater or wastewater on neighboring properties. That's part of the planning review process to make sure that water's contained in detention ponds and graves or this and that. So they can't go out there and start dumping water on people next door. The reason I wanted to show you this slide is that the transfer station at one-twenty-five Riverside Drive is located three-hundred-and-seventy-five feet from the Etowah River. Everybody in this room knows how many people fish, boat, canoe, tube down the river every, every weekend. We also know how nice and expensive some of the homes are just downstream from this transfer station. I don't know of any complaints or water quality problems we've had on the Etowah River because of this transfer station. Next slide, please. Transfer station that the Cashes are proposing will be over, over five-hundred-and-thirty feet from the nearest creek at the south of the property. Next slide, please. So we, as the landowner, we don't want any problems either. So we collaborated with the Cashes and said, after the, after some of the concerns at the Planning Commission meeting, and said, look, what can we do to address some of these concerns? And so these are the conditions that Randy referred to earlier, no bare conditions, all buildings must be three-sided, floor-to-ceiling, all buildings must have concrete floors, the wastewater has to enter a detention pond before it can get to the undisturbed area. There'll be installed odor eliminating systems in the roof of each building, and then the Cashes are also willing to leave an undisturbed buffer along the property line between this property and Ms. Goolsby's property. That's in addition to the buffer you saw in the slide earlier.
So could I be wrong, you're willing to have a larger buffer than what would be required by the City of Cartesville?
I don't think there is a buffer requirement on heavy industrial.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you're willing to put one when one's not required, I guess.
That's right, that's right. And that obviously diminishes the usable area that they're paying for. All right, next slide, please. There was some concern about, well, what happens if the Cashes go away or vanish in the middle of the night? Well, that would be a horrible business decision. But even if they did, and they left these two structures full of waste, what would it cost to get rid of it? Hauling and disposal fees on the size buildings that they're proposing is about ten thousand dollars. We, as a landlord, can absorb that if that happens. Next slide. You may say, well, how are you going to do that? Well, these are the principles that are affiliated with a landlord. Jim Smith, forty years in the trucking business, Andrew Smith, twenty years in the trucking business, and me, Howard Smith, have been leasing commercial industrial buildings here for over twenty years. If the Cashes leave and leave a mess, which there are EPD regulations that were, that are in place on how you have to close a transfer station, we've got the trucks, we've got the capacity to haul the trash out, and I've got the expertise to re-lease this property and get it performing again.
And you would, you would essentially be the one that's liable for that?
Uh, I suppose.
Yeah.
I suppose.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know that for a fact, but I, I suppose. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Continue on with our public hearing, and ask anybody who wishes to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name's Floyd Gregory Goolsby, address is twenty-sixteen two-ninety-seventh Way, Falls City, Washington. I'm Mr. Goolsby, and the co-owner of the property at three-twenty-nine Industrial Park Road. It's a twenty thousand square foot building, Howard just referred to that. Obviously, we've got concerns, and I appreciate the clarification and, and all the information that's been provided tonight. Our principal concern is based on the operations and through the public records research, we still have concerns about what may happen that's happened in the past with the operations with Cash Environmental, and given what we've read in the newspapers, what's in the public records, and the and the number of violations, it still is a concern of ours. We don't know the caches, but certainly, we feel like there's impact on our tenants there. We have two tenants. Between the two of them employ about 20 people. Their employees have concerns about what's going on, so we have to recognize that. The Chapter 11 bankruptcy, we still don't quite understand it. Obviously, it's a reorganization, but it still raises questions in our mind as to the viability of this and, you know, what does happen if indeed this becomes insolvent? And what happens to the degradation of the property? It's, you know, there's an odor concern. There's a lot of things that we feel like will impact the operations that we have there. We've got a substantial investment. We just ask that you look closely at the operators and make sure that this is the type of operator that is going to be suitable for Cartersville operating this type of facility. That's our concern. It's not a transfer station. We understand that this is an industrial area, and there's a lot of similar activities, not necessarily processing municipal waste. That's a little different story from construction waste. But I think the issue for us is how it's operated. Based on some of the photographs that we saw from EPD, we felt like, gosh, this is really, really bad. So maybe we're wrong, but I've been in business for 40 years, and I know a lot of times leopards don't change their spots. They continue to do similar things. So that's all I have to say.
So Mr. Goolsby, just to make sure I'm hearing you right, your concern isn't over the usage of the land. Your concern is over the company that was doing it.
Yes, exactly. Based on all the information in newspapers, all of the reports that we've read. I know there've only been four this year, but, you know, we're talking about, we're talking about a landfill that caught on fire and burned for an extended period of time. You know, that, to me, is pretty serious business.
Any other questions for Mr. Goolsby?
Thank you.
Continuing on with SU 22-03. Anybody else wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time? And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for SU 22-03. Does counsel need any other questions or need for clarification from staff at this time? Thank you. Counsel will take this up with another public hearing and consideration at our meeting on November the 3rd. Moving on to SU 22-04.
Thank you again, Mayor and Counsel. This is the proposed special use permit that was discussed during T 2204 regarding the private park. The applicant has a specific site that they are looking to put the private ballfield on. With that, I think we discussed it pretty much during the text amendment. The applicant is still here for the special use permit. The applicant, to answer the previous question that was asked, I can't remember who asked it. Lighting is not proposed per their application in writing. So that is one of the seven things we evaluate special use permit applications on. And per their application, right now, the fields will not be lighted.
Would that be, I mean, later on, if they wanted to add lighting, is that something, that, I mean, if something zone has a permit for a private park, is lighting allowed there?
Well, again, one of the seven things that we evaluate a special use permit on is lighting. Their application does state it will not be lighted. So we could go an extra step if there was a concern about lighting and condition it to no lighting, and then they make them come back before you if they chose to light it in the future, so. Or we can consider the application where they actually wrote "no lighting" as part of their approval.
All right. Thank you. I'll open up a public hearing for SU 22-04. Ask anybody who wishes to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time?
Good evening, again. Lauren Knoll, Staffing Engineering, 114 Old Mill Road. I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this special use permit.
Questions? Go ahead. The paper practice, is that for team, organization?
So it is going to be a private ballfield for the youth, and I do believe they have a team in mind. I'm just, I'm not too familiar on the specifics of which team it will be. But there is an organization that is going to be using this particular field.
Basically, they would be building a field that they could rent out?
Correct.
Would you have one particular team in mind for the rent already?
I would have to ask my client. I'm not entirely sure.
What did you say earlier?
I'm sorry. So the field is going to be used for youth ballfield practice, but they will be kind of renting it out, and that's why it's going to be private. But as far as a particular team right now, I don't have that answer for you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Then we'll continue on with the public hearing for SU 22-04. Anybody who wishes to step forward at this time, speak for or against, may do so. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU 22-04. We'll take this up for another public hearing and final consideration at our meeting on November 3rd. Mr. Porter, you've got the next item.
Yes, Mayor. This is an agreement with Freeman Matheson Gary, LLP. It's going to assist us with updating our reasonable accommodation and policy in our personal manual, and I recommend this is approved.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second?
Home in favor, the capitol saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. While Mr. Morgan is making his way forward, Chair will entertain a motion to add two items to the agenda?
Is that moved?
Second? Home in favor, the capitol saying aye?
Aye.
Two items added. Mr. Morgan, how are you?
Yes, sir. Doing well, sir. We bring before you tonight a maintenance agreement, service maintenance agreement with TKE. We're asking for your approval. We are asking, though, if it is approved, to have it approved with the condition that the mayor can sign after any changes to the contract. Keith had some changes that we updated. So any of those changes come back, would go back through legal approval, and Dan would sign off on it also.
Is that a condition that would need to be put on the motion?
Yeah.
All right. If there's any questions, now's the time to ask them, or discussion. If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Would you like to add the condition that I can sign the paperwork?
Yeah.
Any changes to that after?
Legal review and...
And I'm happy to say that Keith has worked on this from home, and that's kind of good news.
We're happy to hear it.
Yes.
So we do have a motion and a second? Home in favor, the capitol saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We're also bringing before you the next item is the Local Heat Assistance and Water Assistance Program. It's a grant program that we participated in previously. They're renewed yearly. So we want to bring that back so our customers that are eligible can use this grant program to assist with any of their heating and or water bills.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Home in favor, the capitol saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. You have a presentation, I believe?
Yes, sir. The property that we have, and we're bringing before you Mr. Henderson, Mr. Wommack, and their group. The property that we have to look at again is a 178 West Main Street property, the old police building. They were a bidder when we originally put the RFP out there. We went with the one bidder that opted out. They're bringing their proposal back. You have in your packets all the information that we sent, and we'll update it, information with the financials and the costs and so forth. I'd like for them to come up if they can at this time.
Matt Wommack, 716 West Avenue, Cartersville, 30120. Mr. Mayor, Counsel. Yeah, this is a proposal that we put together in response to an RFP that the city issued. It's been 15, 16 months ago, I guess. We had proposed a residential development and put our packet together. We've assembled a team that think, where we think we can do this successfully and are looking for the council to just approve our proposal.
Are we approving the proposal tonight? Or we're approving the city to go in negotiations with the company to develop a proposal?
Last time this was done, Mr. Mayor, I believe you and that attorney, the city attorney, myself, and Mr. Morgan negotiated a contract, and the council brought forth a contract that's agreeable to both sides, giving them due diligence to do their evaluation, and then that move forward if there's any regulations or conditions you want to put on there, particularly that's part of the contract.
So that comes before us, again, before everything's passed on?
Okay.
So again, the way I understand it, we're essentially approving, we're agreeing that we're going to have you guys go into negotiations with them to come up with this or something similar to this that will later come for us, for us to go on?
Yes, sir.
Is that true? Is that the way y'all understand it, too?
Well, yes. It's my understanding we would actually go to contract. And I, we did propose a sale price. I don't know if that is the one that we will go to contract on, but what are your thoughts on that?
That will be part of that, because it was a publicly bid. It would have to be the $550,000. But again, it's the terms of the contract, and then how quickly you're going to go, you know, get up to speed. And if you take ownership of property, how much due diligence time you need, everything basically like the purchasing property anyway.
Yeah. And we laid out, we did lay out a timeline in the proposal of kind of how we thought that would work, and we think we can stick to that. I will say, there was one difference from the proposal that we submitted last year to the one this year, is just we changed the, just the facade of the building that we're proposing on building. It was a little contemporary, and I think we're going for a more traditional look that will fit in better downtown. Actually, Cindy printed out some pictures of some product that we like, and we would like to kind of use this as an inspiration to build these. Now, this is a concept. This is more than likely not exactly what this will be. We don't have a survey, a signed survey right now, showing exactly how big the lot is. So there's obviously a lot of stuff to work out, but that's where we, that's where the due diligence comes in.
That would be in the contract terms, if you had to do the diligence period, if you evaluations that you did.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, the way I understand it, relative to the price, I mean, that's not something that's going to be, that was in the bid package. That was, I think, when we talked about working with the city staff, it was more over the design elements and looks and items of that nature.
Yeah, development, and then, yeah, I'm sure we'll have to talk to the historical preservation folks about what it looks like and all that stuff. So, yeah, I understand that.
Okay, thank you. All right, good. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Home in favor, the capitol saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Gary, are you there?
He's gone.
Oh, he's gone, okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Thank you. Sure.
Barry Henderson, for Howard Heights. And I just wanted to make the comment that this particular piece of property is like a centerpiece on your table. This is a very, very visible piece of property. And it's the first time there's ever been a piece of property that I know of in many, many years that starts a development, a redevelopment, whatever you want to call it, for downtown. And I think all of us, Matt and I both live in the historic district, we're very involved in the city. And I just want to say that we're very, very tuned in to making this property an extremely nice piece of property and to make it fit that centerpiece presence that it has. So as we work through this, we'll have ideas, and the city will have ideas. But working as a team, I think we can come up with something that we're damn proud of. I really do. Just want to say that.
Thank you. Mr. Forsyth, I think you're up next. Badger Daylighting.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. The first item I have here is we had, as a matter of routine maintenance in the wastewater plant, we had drained a couple of aeration basins. And as per normal, they're full of grit and sludge and sand and those kind of things. It was more full than normal. So we had to bring in a vacuum truck to clean those out. City staff could have done it with their own equipment. It would have taken about two weeks. They did it in two days. But now I have this invoice for $8,804.04 to pay to Badger. Daylighting is a budgeted maintenance expense. I recommend it for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve?
Second?
Home in favor, the capitol saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yes, sir. The second item is grit chamber repair parts. Again, as a matter of routine maintenance, these, we have two grit chambers in the wastewater plant. About every four to five years, they have to be completely rebuilt, just because of the nature of what they do. The number-two grit chamber is now due for rebuilding. WSG and Solutions, Inc. is the sole source provider for the Envirex grit collector mechanisms. They have given us a price of $49,059 for all the material to repair that grit collector, or rebuild it, rather. It is a budgeted expense. I recommend it for your approval.
Any discussion? If not a motion?
Motion to approve? Second?
Home in favor, the capitol saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yes, sir. And the final item I have is the Atlanta Regional Commission payment. This is a payment we make annually to the Atlanta Regional Commission and the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District. This allows us to be a party and allows us attorney-client privileged meetings to discuss water supply allocation with the Corps of Engineers in Lake Altoona. This is a shared cost between the city and Bartow County. The city's portion is $50,000. Bartow County will pay an equal amount to the ARC as well. It is a budgeted expense. I recommend it for your approval.
Okay. Any discussion? If not a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Home in favor, the capitol saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hampton, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This next item up, switching cubicles, PMH 11. These are some switching cubicles we need to serve the Northwest Logistics Park on the south end of town on 293. The SNC cubicles, which are standardized cubicles that we use, are sole sourced to utilities in the state through Whitehead and Associates. These cubicles will enable us to serve power to Logistics Park on Highway 293, and also eventually will serve as a backup tie point to serve Tennessee Street in case of an emergency. The total price for two cubicles was $55,734, and this is a budgeted expense. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve?
Second?
Home in favor, the capitol saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Next item is Transformers for 175 Main Street Apartments. Requesting authorization to purchase six 300 KVA Transformers. We did go out to bid on these, got three bids back. We are requesting to purchase the units from Transformer Network, Inc. They were the lowest bid. The delivery time was a little longer, but based on where they are with the construction, we just didn't see the point in paying almost twice as much for the Transformers and just sit on the yard until they get ready for them. So we do have one or two that we could start with if they did get started earlier. But the price of the Transformers for six of them was $86,100, and it was a budgeted expense.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Home in favor, the capitol saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The last one for you, Derek. No, you've got two more.
Nah, two more. I'm sorry. Loaded you up. These are two 750 KVA Transformers for, basically, a bowl floor. They are doing an expansion up there. And we haven't bought two of them because we don't have one in this size and this voltage, primary voltage. So we needed a backup. We did go out and receive five bids. We are requesting to purchase the units from Transformer Network. They were very close to being equal to the lowest bid, but the delivery times was 30 weeks shorter. So we D and M the best bid overall, based on that combination. And the total price for the two units was $44,900.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion for the best bid.
Second?
Home in favor, the capitol saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I like when you buy that kind of stuff, Derek, because that means we're growing and there's electricity running through those things. So go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And the last one was for the same industrial park out here, I mean, logistics park out here in the south end of town. We're looking to purchase 250 KVA Transformers to serve them. We also got five bids on this one. And we're requesting to purchase the units from Transformer Network, Inc. Being that they are pretty much identical in price to the cheapest bid and 30 weeks shorter, we qualified them as best bid. So we're recommending for $23,740 to purchase the two units from them. seven hundred and forty dollars to purchase the two units from them. Budgeted expense.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion for the best bid.
Second.
All in favor, the cap is saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Right-of-way dedication for Jackson Farm.
Yes, Mayor. This is for Phase One, Units Two and Three, Jackson Farm. It's their standard dedication for the right-of-way out there, and I recommend this for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, the cap is saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Certificate of Dedication for Everton Estates.
Yes, sir. This is Everton Estates, Phase One, water and sewer lines and standard dedication and maintenance agreement, and recommend this for your approval as well.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, the cap is saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Ryan Hall.
You need to slip Dan some money to move you to the front of the agenda when he's not, don't you? Save the best for last, right?
Hell, I wouldn't go that far, but we'll give it a shot. How about that?
All right. Let's do it.
I'm a Mayor and Counsel, we'll be looking at the August 2022 numbers and comparing them to August 2021. In the General Fund, revenues increased over last August by seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Expenses increased by a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Two areas of revenues, I look at on a monthly basis, local often sales tax, you can see that we've got about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar increase there. Billing permits and inspection fees have an increase there of about two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. In the Water and Sewer Fund, revenues increased over last August by 1.164 million dollars. Expenses decreased by 226 thousand dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the General Fund. In the Gas Fund, revenues increased over last August by 3.114 million dollars. Expenses also increased by 3.477 million dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase gas, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the General Fund. In the Electric Fund, revenues increased over last year by 1.38 million dollars. Expenses increased by 1.74 million dollars. This is due to increase, decreased personnel, decreased personnel costs, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the General Fund. Stormwater Fund, revenues decreased over last August by 3,000 dollars. Expenses decreased by 17,000 dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. In the Solid Waste Fund, revenues decreased over last year by 221,000 dollars. Well, expenses decreased by 36,000 dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses and decreased operating expenses. And finally, in the Fiber Optics Fund, revenues increased over last year by 34,000 dollars. Expenses decreased by 50,000 dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the General Fund. In our cash position for the month of August, unrestricted cash increased while the restricted cash decreased. Spots account balances, Spots 2003 balance is 56,747 dollars and 50 cents. Spots 2014, 231,991 dollars and 10 cents. Spots 2020, 6,823,261 dollars and 69 cents.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things to point out. Tom mentioned some of this, elaborate a little further. General Fund, obviously, through August, it's looking much better than in prior year. You can see where General Fund actually had a net profit for the month of August, which is unusual for us because the proper taxes typically don't come in, but we did have some additional revenues coming in as well as less, lower expenditures. Couple of other things to point out, particularly on the gas. Obviously, we've been talking about this for several months, but the natural gas, Michael Dixon, the gas superintendent, gave me update in August, the index price was 12 dollars and 44 cents per decatherm. That's the highest he's ever seen it before, and that's driving not only our natural gas costs, which unfortunately, our citizens will see that as these cold days, like we have had the last couple of days will happen. It's going to be costly for that, as well as in the electric side. You know, as I've shared with Counsel on, forty percent of our electric productivity, where generation is, power generation is, is natural gas, and by these higher coal prices and natural gas prices, it's driving up our electric costs, which unfortunately, we have to pass on to our citizens, but you can see where the gas for the month of August was 1.8 million for the month of August, and Electric Fund only had a $22,000 net profit, which is very low with electric. But we're trying to do our best to maintain our rates as far as we're in. Our competition is having to raise rates because of these high costs that are throughout the industry.
Yep. And once again, as Tom pointed out, our expenses on the gas side increased 3.47. 3.41 of that is the purchase of the gas, and the electric side expenses increased 1.74. 1.72 of that is simply the increase in the purchase, or cost of purchase of the electricity. So nobody's happy about it. Everybody up here's got to pay the same rates as everybody else, and I applaud the city for doing what they can to help keep expenses down in other areas that we can control. So, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Dan, you had a couple of items that you wanted to mention?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. One, the Georgia Airports Association awarded the Carters of Bartow Airport Authority, or Airport, the 2022 Airport Project of the Year. You take the great picture up there, but basically, that was our 10 million dollar project for the runway repaving project out there, as well as EMAS on the north end, which is the Engineered Materials Restoration System. I was going to share that with the Mayor and Counsel. And the Georgia Airport Association President mentioned that the local funding source of that 10 million dollar project was about 1.8 million in local funding, and he said he wished he could get that locally. And I applaud the Mayor and Counsel, as well as the Commissioner, joining forces with the Airport Authority to help fund that project. And as we all know, I mean, we have some corporate partners out there, as well as other industry that comes to town because of using that airport. So it's a generation airport, but I wanted to share that with the Mayor and Counsel. The next thing I wanted to congratulate Freddie on, he was appointed as Director in Northwest Corridor of the Georgia City and County Manager Association. Basically, District One, he's represented for us, and Freddie and I are part of the Georgia City and County Manager Association. He's going to be working with other city and county managers and assistants in this District One, so congratulations, Freddie, on that.